Meeting for Rock Castle County Education. We are going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And actually, the first point of business we are going to do is we are going to eat. And we're going to do the presentation while we eat. Okay? So by all means, before we go any further, let's just go ahead and get our meal.
Yes, and the food is in the back, right behind Mr. Chris and Ms. Betty. And Savannah is back there that can direct you, but please don't be shy. Let's get lunch.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Try to make it your own.
You know, Erica really didn't have them. Miss involved.
Thank you all for coming. I understand it's off like a normal teacher hall. President, does that mess up the stream making fun of that? You're good. Okay. Um, thank you all for coming tonight. It is the middle of June. I recognize the commitment that you're making to coming out. The school year is finished up, but I really, really appreciate you being here with us. There's been a lot, a lot of hard work going into this, this school year. And it's nights and nights for us to celebrate and to say thank you to, to everyone for, for helping us have a very, very successful school year. In front of you, you have just a token of our appreciation. And we have had community-based accountability points made for each of you as a thank you for your time and your effort and for coming to our meetings and for helping us be a part of setting goals, but more importantly, be a part of reaching those goals. And we have a lot to celebrate tonight. So I'm going to stop talking and we'll just get right into this. The way that this is going to work, I'll do a quick introduction. And then each pillar chair will come up and talk through and give their annual report. And hope that you enjoy it and hope that you can recognize how much work has gone into this. Not only from the people in this room, but our teachers, our bus drivers, our food service, our instructional assistants. Every single person is part of the team and we're so appreciative of that. So for the board members, as you go later into closed session to do the superintendent evaluation, you'll notice on page two. Let's see. Right? Okay. On page two, you'll notice we have each pillar listed. And we have, I have linked that to the superintendent standard. So you have that in front of you as you, when you go into that, then you're able to see the, how the work is related. Okay, so let's kick off celebrating. And I have the trophy here that we received for being named as one of the top 100 places to work in Kentucky. So I want you just to think about how many opportunities there are for people to go find employment across the state of Kentucky. Lots and lots, even just right here within this community. But to think we're one of the top 100, to me, that, that really means a lot. And what makes that meaningful is that came from the surveys that our staff filled out. That wasn't me or Ms. Jenny or Mr. Rippert or anybody sending in a lot of information. That just strictly came from what our employees had to say about the work environment and the opportunities they have working within our school district. We were the only school district that was recognized, so that makes it even more special. And that was a really great night because Angie was able to go and attend the dinner and the recognition ceremony. But I want to kick off by saying that how much we appreciate our staff, how much we appreciate all that they do to make Rock Castle County Schools a great place to work. And we do have that. Yes. We do have that at central office. When you walk in the front door, we, we thought, where, where do we need to keep this trophy? And so we just put it on Ms. Trish's desk if you come in the front door. So anybody that comes in can see and know that this is a great place to be. Okay, so I'm going to kick off and let Mr. Thomas come up and talk a little bit about pillar one, student achievement.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As always, it is good to be with you all. I don't know, is it just me or just being in this setting? Like, it really gives you a sense of, of community. So.
You want to start saying?
Uh, no. Jesse said it's introductory tonight.
Love your Jesse.
No, I said I get to go first. I'll be the one that'll come up here and talk with you. And I also said, I'm not. And I also said I get to go first. Whatever food is left is mine. No, seriously. Uh, just, just very appreciative to be here and just to add on to what Dr. Brown said. Just, just very blessed to be a part of the school system and just to be a small part of, of it. And, and to have two children in it is.
But there is a lot, a lot of work that is, that is ongoing, each, each and every day. And I see several people shaking their heads. There's a lot of truth, just a lot of assessment in general, not only the KSA, AP testing, final exams, lots. So want to focus a little bit more so with reading and math. And, you know, again, state accountability, there is a greater weight in those content areas than the separate academic areas. Well, and coming from the elementary level, I think we can all agree with this. If, if children, they don't know how to read, it's going to be very difficult to do all those other things. So want to look at reading, and again, these are not official results, but something that we've done for the last several years. I've mentioned this before, and Dr. Ballinger has been a big part of this. We, we've had this shift in our district to create a data culture and to have data comprehension. You know, I can remember growing up and, 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 you know, playing sports and there was always this phrase, the numbers don't lie. And, and that always stuck with me. You know, that's where your proof is at, that's where your evidence is at. Is that the end all be all? No, it's not. But, uh, so we use the tool of iReady. I think most people in the room, they all understand that, recognize that. And so we use iReady. Students K through 12 take three diagnostics throughout the year in the fall, winter, and the spring. And so the spring diagnostic in particular, we administer those at the school level weeks before the KSA. There's a few reasons for that. Don't want to get into a lot of detail, but with that, by taking that assessment early, have the calendar in front of me, but some schools took it right after spring break. Maybe there might have been one took it even before spring break. That really gives us an idea, a good predictor of where we are currently with our school. And, uh, you know, with that, it just gives us a really good gauge of, of. And then also it tells us in the breakdown of maybe some areas, some domains, some standard areas that we need to work in before KSA gets here. You know, in reading, it may be with comprehension. In math, it might be with, uh, measurement. And so anyways, I think you can see here on the screen with the diagnostic reading. Now, this is students in grade three through five. Get to middle school and a second, high school as well. But for elementary in grades three through five, uh, so you can see there, 613 students. That's four, Broadhead, Alberton, around some. We have 309 students. It's 50% that scored at the proficient level. Now, just to kind of review with, with state accountability, you think about it like a stair step system. So you have novice at the very bottom. We don't want any students in novice. Now, realistically, we know that we want to have some. Then you have apprentice, proficient, and distinguished. So with that proficient, distinguished level, that's what we identify as scoring at proficiency. And that's right upon grade line. So that's what we, as a school district, that's what we aspire for. We think all kids are deserving of that opportunity, and that's what we're preaching every day. So going back to the goal, remember the initial goal of improving reading proficiency at the elementary level was to go for 52%, that's at 2023-24. We wanted to raise that to 60%. So with that, at the spring diagnostic, again, that's not the official KSA. It's a few weeks before, we had students scoring, uh, we had 50%. So we were so close to what we scored last year, right? Now, it is very important to note that all of our schools, when they administered this diagnostic, students that have an, an IP, individual educational plan, they did not receive accommodations on that. Those students received extra support on the, the actual KSA. That could be an actual reader of the test. It could be a scribe, it's time into the computer. It can be a paraphraser. There are various elements of support there. So, uh, really what that tells me, and, and I hope I make this clear, is that even with students at the 50%, we, we kind of have some house money to play with, right? Because we know that when the actual results come back, those students on the KSA, they're going to have proctors that will administer those services for them. So we expect those scores to go up. So I'm very optimistic that at 50% with no accommodation weeks before, you know, the actual test. And we do put a lot of emphasis on iReady diagnostic. We do. We, we try to make it as real a testing environment as possible, but it's not the KSA. And, and I think I can say this in front of this group, you know, iReady is research-based. We use it so much in our schools, and, and I think all of our principals would agree too, that we have, we have heard numerous times that iReady is more rigorous and more challenging than the actual KSA. So again, we have a little bit more to put in the bank to, to play with and help with raising our scores. Spent a lot of time on that. Want to move on to math really quick. Math, again, at the elementary level, grades three through five, we had 612 students take the iReady diagnostic. We had 281 of those students, so 46% were scoring at proficient. Now, going back to the 23-24 scores, we only scored 49. So in the spring, we're at 46. So we're, we're very, again, very optimistic that accommodations with real testing, that we are going to be able to exceed the 49% and hopefully get to that 55%. All of the goals that we set are right around between five to eight. It's what we wanted to raise our scores. Again, no accommodations for especially. I'm going to skip through, again, science, social studies, writing. There's not a lot of information there to, to share at this point. Want to move on to middle school. Middle school, the iReady diagnostic is still a very powerful, important tool. I think Jessica would agree with that. Students at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all take the KSA. So in reading, in the spring, students grade six through eight, you can see there, I believe, below number six, you can see that 44%, that's 245 of 551 students, 44% scored proficiency. Now, last year, we only had 48%. So again, we are very close. So we're very optimistic that we'll meet last year's score and surpass it. Now, this is really exciting, in my opinion. Look at math, middle school. In 23-24, middle school math, the number of proficiency, the percentage of students scoring at proficiency was 36%. So in the spring diagnostic, we have 196 students of 547 score, which is 36% score proficiency. So we have already met last year's goal. And again, when you consider the accommodations in that, and then get to the actual KSA, uh, you know, I, I want to knock on some wood or something, but hopefully, Ms. Jessica, we're expecting some, some really good results. So, you know, kudos to you and, and your team, several of you around, right there. So, so great job on that. And again, with science, social studies, writing, there just isn't a lot of information to share. I know I've probably already, you know, my time, I apologize for that. I, I do want to mention this about high school, again, because all these goals were based on KSA. High school, they take the diagnostic assessment, but again, that's really the only tool that is offered for high school students. So if you have any high school children, no, but trying to get them motivated to take an assessment like that can be difficult. So honestly, we don't put a lot of stock into the iReady, what KSA is. All right. Questions on that? All right. The second, uh, second key question that we had was, actually, I, I do want to mention this. Another goal we have was to evaluate curriculum maps for all school levels. Luckily, did that 100%. That's a process that's going to be ongoing, right? Year after year after year. It's an annual thing. So we're at 100%. A lot of work goes on at POCs at the school level. Those curriculum documents are aligned to the Kentucky academic standards. There's a lot of clarity for learning that has went on at every school level. And then also looking at the next goal, which was to develop common assessments at the elementary level. We did not meet that goal, but I tell you what, we started that work, we found out that we actually needed to take another step before getting to the formative assessments common across the district. And so just a lot of effort put into the development of learning intentions, success criteria for our HQIR, high quality instructional resource benchmark at the elementary level. And, uh, again, aligned to, aligned to standards. And so now we want to continue this goal into next year and, and with common assessments and not just use iReady diagnostics. We want to continue to narrow, uh, the testing that we had. All right. Now, moving on. The second key question was to develop a, a multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS. Let me say that acronym. As far as myself, uh, you know, that was a, a professional goal of mine that I had with Dr. Ballinger. Try to put a lot of work into that. We now have a district MTSS plan. It's on the website if you have lots of free time. It's very interesting, of course. So I just want to thank the school interventionists. We spent hours, hours working on that plan. We looked at other school districts. We tried to think about what is good for our district and, and compare and so forth. We established an MTSS district team. We have several members that are here with us, and we try to meet on a routine basis and, and discuss. As you all know, MTSS is that big broad umbrella of academics, but also social, emotional learning and behavior. And just to kind of finish that up, something else I'm very proud of, we, we created a, a tier two and tier three document that tracks students throughout the district academically and with behavior. We have tier one, tier two, tier three. The lower performing students are at tier two and tier three. They're kind of like the red flag that we really need to be paying attention to. So we, we targeted specifically for each elementary school, all of the kids that were at tier two, tier three, and tried to use that, and look at Ms. Debbie, she's the only elementary principal that I see. We, we tried to use that as a talking point, as something that can be referred to as POCs, something we would know on the district level, and, and, and I just think it's a good tool, a little device. And then lastly, something else, you know, behavior. Gosh, I hate to say it, but COVID really brought up, brought forth that our, our kids, you know, going to school is just so different. And, and our young people have so much going on in, in their lives. And so it is, it is vital that, that we track students that are having issues with their schoolwork, their attendance at home, uh, issues that they have with their peers. And so at Broadhead Elementary, we kind of use them as a guinea pig there at fourth grade. We use what we call the Student Risk Screening Scale, SRSS. We had three teachers in fourth grade, and those ladies went through their homerooms, and they, uh, they screened their students based on a point system and then calculated the total that put them again at tier one, tier two, tier three. So you have some consistency there with academics. And so we have another set of data with behavior. I know that we, we've had surveys before, we've had other means of, of trying to collect, excuse me, other means of trying to collect information about student behavior. But, but I am very optimistic, not to use that word again, but, but very hopeful with this system, that we can expand that to other grade levels, other schools, and, and so. Want to mention this as well, it's probably going to be said again, leader in me is coming to our district. It's already started. That is going to fall within the MTSS as well. Since, uh, since May, all of our district administration, our principals, our school teams have had initial leader in me training. More is going to come to all of our staff in July, August, September. You know, it's a lot about the seven habits of highly effective people, teaching our kids, and this is the, this is the instructional person, but teaching our kids about citizenship, responsibility, morals, being a good person and so forth. I, I think it's going to go over really well with our, our community, our parent guardians. All right. Last, last key question, to what degree? To what degree is our school system serving accelerated high-performing students? We talked a lot about with MTSS, those lower, those mid to lower kids. With this final key question, we wanted to serve and not forget those that are performing at a high level. So those students at the high school that are involved in AP courses, those students that have been identified as gifted and talented. We are getting more specific in trying to target those students. You can see the numbers on the screen there. I'm not going to read those out loud to you. You can see the number of students that are enrolled in an AP course at the high school. And this year, those numbers are greater than last year. And a lot of that has to do with a lot of the efforts that went on at the high school, and look at Ms. Marquita, just the intentionality of that, placing an emphasis on AP courses and, and just the importance of that and the promotion of what our high school offers, which is over 20 AP courses. And then lastly, with gifted and talented, you can see there the numbers of, of fourth through 12th graders that went through that formal process. We have a large number of students that are in that primary talent pool. It's less informal. There is a screening process. There is, uh, you know, uh, it's no guarantee for gifted and talented, but there is a nomination process, observation, stew, work samples, and, and so. So look forward to taking these numbers, comparing those to next year. And with that, I'm finished. I know that we, we've had surveys before, we've had other means of trying to collect. Excuse me, other means of trying to collect information about student behavior. But, but I am very optimistic, not to use that word again, but, but very hopeful with this system. That we can expand that to other grade levels, other schools and, and so. Want to mention this as well, it's probably going to be said again, leader in me is coming to our district. It's already started. That is going to fall within the MTSS as well. Since, since May, all of our district administration, our principals, our school teams have had initial leader in me training. More is going to come to all of our staff in July, August, September. You know, it's a lot about the seven habits of highly effective people, teaching our kids. And this is the, this is the instructional person, but teaching our kids about citizenship. Responsibility, morals, being a good person and so forth. I, I think it's going to go over really well with our community, our parent guardians. All right, last, last key question, to what degree? To what degree is our school system serving accelerated? We talked a lot about with MTSS, those lower, those mid to lower kids. With this final key question, we wanted to serve and not forget those that are performing at a high level. So those students at the high school that are involved in AP courses. Those students that have been identified as gifted and talented. We are getting more specific in trying to target those students. You can see the numbers on the screen there. I'm not going to read those out loud to you. You can see the number of students that are enrolled in an AP course at the high school. And this year, those numbers are greater than last year. And a lot of that has to do with a lot of the efforts that went on at the high school and look at Ms. Marquita. Just the intentionality of that, placing an emphasis on AP courses and, and just the importance of that. And the promotion of what our high school offers, which is over twenty AP courses. And then lastly, with gifted and talented, you can see there the numbers of fourth through twelfth graders that went through that formal process. We have a large number of students that are in that primary talent pool. It's less informal. There is a screening process. There is. You know. It's no guarantee for gifted and talented, but there is a nomination process, observation, stew, work samples. And so, so look forward to taking these numbers, comparing those to next year. And with that, I'm finished. Sorry for going so long.
Mr. Benny is going to come up and give us a report about pillar two, about our student readiness. And the first slide that he's going to talk about is our post-secondary readiness scores. And I don't care to admit when I got this number, I think it was day before yesterday when Mr. Bustle sent me a text. I, I may have just had a few tears coming down my cheeks, so I don't care at all to admit that.
Well, when I first got it, JD Bustle sent me a picture of a guy driving a mine. But it is, that's where we started at with our post-secondary readiness was. Where our goal was just to get to eighty-five percent. We got to nine-eight, one-eight-seven. And I made sure I put the exact number on there so JD wouldn't be disappointed. And I think really it was just the emphasis and awareness that we put on that to get the right people notified of what, what it was about and how to get there. You know, and, and that really increased our number a lot. So many people didn't really know how, they knew about what it said post-secondary readiness. They just didn't know how, what it took to get there, you know? And once we made them aware of that and they put some emphasis on it, and that's how we reached that goal. In the middle school, the two-point-two one was the same way really. Ms. Jessica and them, they all do a great job of making sure that everybody's aware of what's going on. And if you know anything about middle school, any progress in the middle school. Thomas was talking about is just kudos to you all because anything in those three years, I think is awesome. Because it's a bad age for a lot of kids, you know, it brings. And so you all do a great job about that. And it was a hundred percent our goal achieved about as far as making them aware and profile to rock it. And if anybody's not aware of that, you need to check it out. There are some great ones this year that come out. I took a couple of pictures of some of my parents that I knew of those people. Just, it just, it's just awesome to see that, you know, kids that I've known since they were this age, you know? It was just really neat to, to see. The middle school going from fifth grade in, this year they didn't, they introduced it to the teachers. Next year, they will fully implement that in the, in the fifth grade going to the so that we require going to the middle school. The kindergarten readiness. We started this year with a pamphlet and really just emphasized people knowing the awareness and being able to know what it took to be kindergarten ready. The score, that's forty-three percent, that's about the state average. So I don't think that's really low for this area. It's not. We want to get to fifty percent and that score has not come out yet. But I think it'll get higher and next year I think it'll even get higher. Listen, one reason I wanted to come tonight was. I'm not a great public speaker by no means. I'll try to get out of it because I can. But as I looked around this room, everybody has really been beneficial in my time here. And I just wanted to make sure I thanked everybody during this time here. I appreciate the opportunity, Ms. Carrie, give me a. And it's bittersweet for me, you know, it really is. It's hard for me to talk about. It's kind of like talking about my mom. It's hard for me to talk about, but it'll always be home to me. And I appreciate all of them. I appreciate all the support that you give me when I come back. So thank you.
We have pillar three, student support, safety and wellbeing. And while Mr. Reddick's coming up here, I'll say, Mr. Benny, this will always be your home. So whoever decides you need to travel back this direction, you can pick up the phone and tell us.
We could withdraw his, his resignation. I echo those things. Mr. Benny's been wonderful the last couple of years. We've worked together hand in glove and I appreciate him so much for the work that he's done over the last couple of years. Benny, we, we really will miss you. I think we all, I know we all felt the same way about you. Appreciate you and all of you guys. I'd like to say something real quick about, about this system, the community kind of business system that we're, that we're presenting tonight. You know, this is such a wonderful way for us to be able to quantify our work. You know, in education, sometimes it's difficult to quantify the work that we do. And so this is a wonderful model. Appreciate Dr. Ballard. It really is an innovative way for us to make our work real and to make it visible. And for us to be able to communicate that to not only each other, to our students, to our parents, but to all of our stakeholders. So appreciate her and I know other superintendents. I think there's one come by today, wanting to emulate what we're doing. So wonderful, wonderful work and I appreciate everything everyone did with that. Appreciate my pillar group. You all were, were wonderful. And I'll say this, you got me and JD Bustle in a group that's hard to get a word in edgewise. I don't think I'm JD because he's not here. But you all have been great, great participants and a lot of the data that you're going to see tonight. Didn't necessarily come from me. A lot of it has come from our group and our, our members. So I'm going to, I'm going to go quick tonight. Brandon over there, look, making sure I go fast. So if you look at one of our objectives, our first objective was that we're going to implement a club day. At a hundred percent across all schools in the district. And that wasn't easy to do, but I'm so happy to say that, that we have done that. Our principals have done that. They made that work. And, and as Ms. Willis will tell you, it took some, took some doing with some schedules and some adjustments. But I believe everyone can see the value in having that extracurricular opportunity during the school day. So we met that at a hundred percent. It's wonderful. I appreciate all the hard work that went in to that, accomplishing that goal. And then the, the number two there, our goal was to align those clubs with, with, with the high school. To make sure that they all, that we had a seamless transition. So at the high school, we have FFA, FFA now at the middle school. Well, at the, at our elementaries, we have garden club. And hopefully that will lead into, now we haven't aligned them all perfectly yet. But, but we're working on that. And so you can see there where we feel like that's about, about seventy percent. That work will continue through the next, next school year. And a lot of people in this room have contributed to that, not only my pillar, but I appreciate that very much. Three-point-two student attendance. You can see our goal was ninety, three-point-three, a one percent increase over last year. Well, we didn't meet, we didn't meet that. Dr. Ballinger, I was a little hesitant. I thought that's an awful lot to go to increase one percent. So she said, well, let's shoot for the, shoot for the start, you know? So we did, we did that. We did that. We set that goal. And that was a lot to go because the year before, previous to that, we did increase one percent. So it wasn't like it wasn't, wasn't realistic, but you know, attendance is one of those things. But the better you do, the harder it is to continue that momentum. But I'm happy to say that we did increase ninety-two-point-six-eight percent was our, our attendance at the end of the year. So we increased almost four tenths of a, of a point there. And I will say, it's amazing at what that, what that is going to do for our AAD, which determines the amount of funding that we get. That four-tenths increase, it, it is going to help us. So that was, I was relieved. We, we had those numbers come in. Some of the things that we did, we sent letters to family this time last year. You remember how still six-eleven was passed, truancy bill? We sent that out to try to make parents aware that that change, if you have over fifteen, at that point, and I have to talk to the county council. You know, so we had to send that out to let everybody know that. We did publish education materials, trying to, you know, we talked about the bad, but we also wanted to promote the good things about attendance. This is why we want parents to educate parents on why it's good to come to school. We know there's reasons why students miss, but we wanted to help parents understand the reasons why, obviously, that, that we need your child at school. We had a lot of initiatives. I appreciate Jesse and we worked very closely with the Pritchard committee. That's, that's part of his goals. I'm sure he's going to talk about that in just a minute. And so we worked very closely. He, he has been instrumental in that, that principles in helping us in particular, high school, middle school, reach that goal. The elementary school, we had that district attendance championship, roundstone. How many times did you win this? She won six. So, you know, other schools, but, but in his percentage. So congratulations to, to Roundstone. They got a little bit of a.
One kid absent was two-point-seven percent.
So you all did, you all did great at that. You can see Ms. Angel in the picture there, her class. I think they won it a couple of times. So, but at the last, I want you to notice this last bullet point. I, I was telling Jesse before, he hadn't seen these numbers. I ran them last week. The percentage of our, of our students who were chronically, I wish I could throw a chart here, but I don't go, I know I got time. But the percentage of students in the district who were chronically absent declined by four-point-two-one percent. For the twenty-four, twenty, that is dramatic. That's all of our efforts. And over the last two years, you all, that number has declined by nine percent. So we were at thirty-six percent, we're now at twenty-seven. We still want that to be a little lower. The state, that state average is like twenty-two percent chronically absent, still above that. But we are increasing, we're decreasing that number at a higher percentage than state is the last couple of years. So I'm really, really happy about that, excited about that, excited what we can do next year as far as that goes. All right, pillar three, how much time is it, Brandon? Three-point-three. I'm moving on here. So this one, we wanted all of our students to be, to be blue on the KSA culture index. But as we know, we don't have that yet. As Thomas mentioned, growth expected. That's, that's our, that's our phrase, Mr. Thomas, growth expected. We expect growth in that, but we just don't know. So what we did, you all probably got as parents, as staff members, you may have got the survey from leader in me asking you to fill out this survey. And of course, as Mr. Thomas mentioned, that's our initiative for next year. We want students to be rocket learners to rocket leaders. So what are we doing? We're going to equip them with becoming leaders. And that, that, that is something that's going, I think, benefit all of us. But they give a survey, the measurable results assessment. We gave that to, we sent that out to parents, to students and to our staff members. And over half of our, of all that were surveyed responded, which is pretty amazing that we got half responses on that. I was very happy about that. So overall, you can see the scoring guide there on the right. I'm not going to talk a lot about that. But you can see district overall, we had a seventy-eight rating, which is pretty good. And that's satisfactory. While this area still needs to be improved, there's evidence that this measure has some strength that can be built upon in coming years. Well, that's our baseline. Next year, that's our baseline. We'll know where we're at to try to improve. So if you look, our leadership was at a seventy-six, our culture was at an eighty, which is really high compared to other schools' baseline. So I was really happy to see that number. And again, that's not just staff, that's students and that's parents. So that's a good place to start. We're effective already in that domain. Academics, we're, we're seventy-nine, we're right there as well. So really happy with those. Again, we have our KSA survey. That'll just give us more data about school culture. All right, three-point-four. Our trauma teams, we're going to utilize these screeners to identify students and we did that. Our trauma teams met at all of our schools. We gave that screen at the beginning of the year so that we could have data to provide tier interventions for students that, that had social or emotional issues. And so our trauma teams are a very important part of our schools and I appreciate our counselors who've led that work this year. You can also see there that we would, we would use the metrics that we would use. So we feel like that that was a hundred percent achieved. It doesn't mean that work is, is finished, that's ongoing. And, and actually next year, you know, there's, there's some other things that we're going to be adding in addition to this. But I think we're at a good place. We've got a good foundation with that pillar, with that objective. If you look at the, at the next one there, the school safety plan, we will pass the school risk assessment. And we did, we were compliant at all of our schools. Mr., we have a risk assessment that Mr. Stuart Adams, who's the school marshal does, he always makes recommendations. We're always in compliance. We've been in compliance for several years, but he makes recommendations. But he's always very quick to compliment us about what we're doing. Now, next year, the Kentucky Service School Safety is going to come to the high school and do an audit for us. That, that it was just, just to check in and see where we're at and, and provide some areas of, of growth. It's not like we're going to be able to fail that, but it's a, it's an opportunity that we'll have for them to provide us with some data. So about school safety and some things that we can improve on. So I'm excited for that for next year. All right, three-point-six SRO crisis. We went into crises this year, didn't we? You know, after the I-75 situation, we were, we, we, there was, that was a terrible few days. And, and obviously this was a goal and I'm very thankful for the opportunity that we had to have five SROs this year. Thankful for the work, Ms. Jeannie Sweet crunching numbers, Joe, Joe Rush, our, our police chief. Mayor Roberts, you know, we all come together to make sure we could have a, a plan where we could have five SROs. You see the guys there, appreciate them so much. They do a wonderful job. And I can't thank them enough for just the peace of mind that they provide for all of our staff. So we're a hundred percent at that and hopefully tonight, the board will approve that MOU. We'll be able to continue that for next year. Three-point-seven, the social, emotional wellness. You can see our objective, a hundred percent of students will have a, a caring adult that they at least can look to. Part of that was to create a mentorship program. Appreciate Jesse helping us with that. Appreciate Ms. Willis. We piloted that at the middle school and we had that achieved. As far as the other schools, we hope to continue that, those, those students that go to the high school next year. That was follow them, that would help us establish that at Rockcastle County High School. And hopefully maybe some point in the future, we can do that at the elementary level as well. That's all that I've got. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Jeannie to come up and she's going to talk to us about our pillar number four, our peaceful system.
It's great to be here with everyone this evening. One of the things that we targeted last year was really looking at our finance system. And you know, as a whole, we wanted to ensure that we are very secure, that we are secure in our finances. We have vast internal controls, not only at the district level, but at the school level. To always ensure that we have the funds that we need to support our schools. So that was what we focused on last year. And for this year, we wanted to implement a new system. Rockcastle County being a smaller district, when our accounting system was implemented many, many years ago. We only had specific components. And the reason being is just simply the availability of funds to support the cost of those systems. So rather than put additional money into our accounting system, we were, you know, really putting every dollar into our, our schools. But if we're at a time at a crossroads that we need to expand. And with that, we have currently, we've installed at one hundred percent our enterprise ERP system. That will be its content manager informs. And what it will do, it will enable our schools to have much greater access to reports. And to kind of streamline some of our processes. So we were installed, we are. We have an outstanding finance team at the district office and our outstanding bookkeepers at the school level. We're going to be working together this summer for training and you'll work toward implementing this system. We're currently in the design phase of developing kind of the workflow. Like what Mr. Reddick will be able to see in his budget accounts. And he will be able to have access to reports. He can enter his own requisitions. And it will really, really expand our flow. So it's, it's quite a process to do all the steps to get it in action. But we're well on our way and really excited for this last phase of design. Dr. Ballinger and I have worked diligently over the past couple of years to really put a focus on supporting rocket leaders. We were excited one evening when this kind of came to us both and apologized. We might have woke some folks up and were like, oh, we've got to do this. And what can we do to support our staff? Our staff is what's, that, those are the people that are making it happen every day in the classroom. Mr. Thomas has talked about the outstanding assessment results that we are seeing. Mr. Reddick has talked about, you know, school safety, you know, our SROs. We have our food service program, you know, wow, the work that they did just this week in serving many, many students for the summer. Our bus drivers, our custodians, what can we do to support everyone? And we have just really, really stretched our dollars, really just maximized every single cent and invested in our leaders. And we are really, really excited about the work that we've been able to do. We surveyed our staff. You've heard tonight, Dr. Ballinger, talk about our best place to work at. Really excited to have that honor to highlight what is going on in Rockcastle County schools and the folks that are making it happen every day. Other school districts are noticing that. Other communities are seeing what Rockcastle County schools is doing. And we can all be proud of that. We conducted a regional salary schedule based on last year's data. And I can tell you, there's the data for salary schedules and competitiveness is like something I've never seen before. So it's really, it's, it's difficult for small, old communities with limited. Um, so it's really, it's, it's difficult for small, old communities, uh, with limited tax revenues to remain competitive. But we can be very proud in, um, a survey that was completed, um, based on like current year salary schedule, um, like size districts. We were the highest paid for books, custodians, and instructional assistants. And that was exciting to see, very, very close, um, in many and many of the other areas. Supporting Rocket leaders, we have supported Rocket pay increase. We've expanded our step increases. Uh, we're excited this next year, we'll kick off our Rocket wellness kickoff. Um, we're excited what we can do, uh, to support the survey results. Um, many of our staff want more opportunities for health and wellness support. So we're going to look at what we can do with supplieses. You know, one of the things I'd really love for us to see is, you know, let's, let's have a family walk, you know, let's, let's include our families. And so we're excited to, to think about how we can make that happen. Uh, Rocket launch range, rank change. We've implemented a system that when employees or certified staff are going for their rank change, they no longer have to wait until the next full year. They can earn their mid-year rank change. We had many, many staff that were able to take advantage of that this year. Rockets growing our own. Uh, we have a tiered system for instructional assistants that are pursuing degrees in education. They are with our students every day, they're an integral part of the instructional process in the classroom. And we have many of them that are pursuing, um, teaching certification. So we want to support them as they're going to school, that there's rank changes at, uh, for them at associate's level, um, bachelor's and teaching certification. Rocket retention and recruitment program, um, Mr. Phillips has, has worked with going out into, um, the communities surrounding us at different schools and recruiting teachers. Um, you know, we monitor some of the number of individuals that are applying for jobs in our school district. That has greatly increased. Um, individuals are wanting to come to Rockcastle County schools to work, and we can all be really proud of that. Uh, national board certified teacher, uh, stipend, um, an individual that might be pursuing a position in an administrative position will continue to receive their stipend. So really excited about the, the supporting Rocket leaders and what we've been able to accomplish with our funds that we have available. Department financial support, um, we have a great leadership team at the district level, and we can all be really proud at how well we work together. We're supporting each other, we're having conversations daily. Uh, we have a weekly meeting where we often share our needs in our department and what are our goals that we're working on. And we've been able to accomplish some great things and work them together. The finance team has supported other pillar teams at departments to meet goals. We provided vegetarian forecasting reports and calculations to assist in goal planning. We continue to, uh, work with our principals to identify instructional needs. Uh, you know, as we identify needs, we're, we're working really hard to find the dollars to support the work that needs to happen in our schools. One of the areas that I'm very passionate about is, um, our four point one D, funding for district priority goals. This is an opportunity where we can look at what, what do we really want to accomplish? What are those, uh, outlined goals that we, that we have, that we need funding for? And I had the opportunity, uh, this spring to be part of a Kentucky team, uh, sponsored by the Gates Foundation, to attend the conference, uh, accelerating Ed conference in Denver. I know this, many educators have this same experience. You go to a conference from, with other educators, and you hear the things that are happening in those communities. And what do you always see? Rockcastle County is doing. You know, this conference focused a lot, it was brought together all kinds of different funding agencies, um, that support grant work. And as you know, I'm, I'm pretty passionate about that and have really tried to integrate that into the finance, um, department. The number of our students that are taking dual credit, uh, we talked about our number of our students taking AP courses, um, the work that the high school's doing with internships. Um, you know, just this summer, we've got a number of students that are participating in internships and getting work-based learning experience. All of those things that you hear about, we can say, we're doing those in Rockcastle County and, uh, doing it with limited funding availability. So we always want to continue to look at opportunities for additional funds. Just this year, um, we've supported, you know, the leadership team, the schools in seeking additional grant opportunities. We applied for two homeland security grants. Uh, one of those was funded. Uh, Mr. Trent's been working, uh, very closely with the Kentucky, um, Homeland Security Team to get us ready to be up and running and implement that. We'll start to see those things happen. I'm sure he will share some additional information about that this evening. Uh, we applied for a second USDA, uh, pool grant. Uh, Mr. Brandon and I worked on that along with, uh, some grant partners. Uh, previously, we refunded one million dollars to implement, uh, some of our integrated technology streams at the middle school and high school. We applied for another grant for our elementary schools. Um, we have not heard back from that grant. We're still hopeful that, um, that that might be funded. The grant has kind of changed, um, recently. Um, so we are seeing some of those impacts. I just think things will come back and look a little differently, and we'll be continuing to apply for grants, but we're still hopeful that one might be funded. Um, again, Mr. Trent and Dr. Ballinger and I, uh, worked on a PD grant, uh, for ATC Center. Our grants try to get a new group and, uh, some new upgrades, uh, was not funded. But, um, we're still hopeful that we can continue to look at how we can make things happen there. Um, Mr. Thomas, uh, worked on a KYCL grant. We're just wrapping up, um, our current KYCL grant, and that has supported many instructional resources in our classrooms and professional development for our teachers. That grant was not funded, they only funded like first year grant opportunities. You never know, I always say, you never know when another war funding might become available. And sometimes grant funders fund down the list. So just never know. We have a couple of, uh, gear up grants, they're currently, um, at the US Department of Ed. You know, again, those, we've not heard from those, but those are still out there in active competition. So grant opportunities really expand what we can do in our classrooms. Services we can provide our students, you know, we mentioned the Pritchard Grant, Mr. Jesse works with. Um, just really, it's kind of the icing on the cake. Granted, yes. Um, so we want to continue to look at opportunities to, um, to provide additional funds for our students. The second was, um, one hundred percent goals achieved, achieved. We work closely to monitor our grant applications, uh, monitor our implementation. A very, very important component is the fiscal management of our grants. Uh, we always want to implement our grants with integrity, and, uh, that continues to show our success, um, for future grant opportunities. That's all I have, but I just want to, again, brag on the finance team and central office. Um, have a great team, honored to work with each of them. Drive by central office, um, most rainy afternoons, uh, you'll see some cars in the parking lot, and oftentimes that's the finance team. Um, if there's something that a school needs, you'll find them staying late to place an order. You'll find them staying late to, you know, to make something happen, to cut a check or something that, you know, someone needs. So I just want to brag on them, they do an outstanding job in supporting our schools. And thank you, uh, opportunity to share with you this evening.
Our pillar five, okay, begin with Mr. Trent to, to, uh, do a facilities update.
I think it's fitting I didn't go after Ms. Jeannie, because I'm always dinner all the day. She's not throwing me out yet, thank you. So I only had, mine are short, uh, but they encompass a lot, I guess you could say. Uh, the first one was the actually modern silly planet one hundred percent, which we do that every year anyway. But, um, I think we paid special attention to it this time, amendment being there. Kind of become, uh, experts. I, I would, I would say over the years, we've had to amend it so many times. That, that's a good thing, that tells you things are happening in Rockcastle County that are, that are good for students, good for staff, good for community. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're after, that's, that's the goal, that's the thing we want to be a hundred percent at. So I feel like we're doing a good job. I think we've got a very proactive board, a very proactive superintendent. Our leadership's all on the same page, we're going in the same direction, and I think that's probably the, I don't think it's that way everywhere, but it is here, I'll say that. So, um, as far as the details for that, uh, seventeenth, Tuesday, we'll have the final meeting to, to wrap that event up. That'll be a public forum, uh, members of the public can speak, they would like to. That's at, uh, five thirty on Tuesday at the RTLC, if you might would like to. So, um, let's move on to the second one now. Uh, construction process. And that's been a time of change. Go back, I like the picture though. That's definitely been, there's definitely been a time for, for things for, uh, Rockcastle County schools. Um, middle school staff, we've all been great. Um, roll with punches, rock hammers and other things. And, uh, I, I don't know how you guys could have been any better. We've tried to work together and, and keep you having school, and I think we've done that. And, uh, Mr. Barry Willard over there for Codell Construction, he's here to give us construction update. I see, he's, he's been wonderful, but his, his father was a school, a school person, I think he did the same job as me. Um, you can tell he cares and he, he works with us every, every single day, work closely with us, and I, I appreciate you a lot. Um, so our goal was, was meeting, uh, meetings, job sites, there's so much more to it than that, but we do meet weekly. And we meet monthly. And one of the things that came out of the last meeting, I thought that was a very good compliment, was one of the design team members said that you guys are the most proactive job site that we go to. And I think a lot of that's got to do with Darryl, a lot of that's got to do with just how we operate as a, as a team. Um, if there's some kind of information out there, we'll have it. You don't get very many, I don't know, but I'll find out. Get pretty much answers. And, and, and in construction process, I think it's really important that you get answers, you don't get held up. And I think that we're doing a really good job at that, and I think we've got a really good team. So I'm not going to take much more time, I guess we're supposed to split eight. Jesse said so. Thank you all.
Hey, next we'll have Mr. Kim come up and talk about transportation.
Was to, uh, develop and implement transportation service policy. Um, this was required by state legislature a couple of years ago. And a lot of what's within this transportation policy already exists within our board policies and our code of acceptable behavior. But this did allow me to kind of, uh, exa- give a little more examples, a little more specifics, and even address some things we probably do on a daily basis, but it wasn't necessarily documented or on paper somewhere. So that's what's in a lot of this, uh, policy. And, uh, as you can see in the red, um, it, this handbook, it's just about eight pages long, it's not real extensive. Um, but one of the big things that we did develop as part of this was a behavior matrix. And this is just to give specific, uh, some more specific information to principals when they are dealing with behavior situations. And this is, this is not necessarily a final copy of this, this is meant to be updated every two years. So if we see things that need to be changed, addressed, tweaked, we will have the opportunity to do this. Um, the implementation part of this was, was a big part of what I've worked through over the past year, figuring out what do we do with this? Okay, we've developed it, we've got it, now what do we do with it? And through some conversations with KSBA, uh, we have determined that we are going to adopt this as part of our board policy. And part of what's being approved tonight, uh, this is in there. So that's one, one implementation area. Um, it's also going to be on our district website. I've talked with Savannah, and we're going to kind of put it front and center, uh, on the transportation, uh, page so that it's easy to access, get to, anybody that wants to see it can, can have that. Uh, and eventually, we might even be able to roll this into our yearly enrollment, uh, for students in a similar manner, how they see the code of acceptable behavior, how parents see that. Perhaps at some point in time, they can have this document, uh, available in that manner as well. Um, another thing was transportation efficiency. Uh, we're still in a contract and still working with school transportation systems, uh, to, to make transportation more efficient. Uh, this is kind of on hold in essence for right now because of the, the GPS. Uh, to really implement this and work with this company, we, we have to have GPS on every school. Uh, and unfortunately, the grant funding that we did apply, we did not receive. So we're still looking at other pathways, other avenues, other opportunities, so that eventually that may be able to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Mr. Chris, um, come up and talk about, um, our food service department. And as he's walking up, I just want, I think that we all really just need to.
I think he, him, his team and, and a lot of volunteers Tuesday pulled off a really, really impressive, um, distribution of food for our, our summer feeding program. It was our kickoff day Tuesday. We didn't really know what to expect. Um, they did a fabulous job, and we'll be doing that the rest of the summer, so.
It just ate more.
Yeah, so, so I'll let Mr. Bishop talk about it, but phenomenal work.
Uh, I was worried that, you know, that night, I had thirty one thousand steps, which is the most I've had in, in a while. Went to VBS right after that, and I went home, I crashed in the recliner, and I wake up and Ms. Ballinger sent me like three texts. How did it go, I'm sorry I wasn't there, you know, this and that. And, uh, I know I just barely could text back. I was really worried about, uh, people complaining because I know it was backed up onto the road. And we just, we were, we were a little shorthanded, we didn't know how many to expect, but it was really a blessing. I know some of, some, I saw some of you all come through for, for your kids and things like that. And we got a, kind of got a little bit better plan on the upfront part of it. We're going to instead of doing it all from eight o'clock Tuesday morning until eight o'clock Tuesday night to do a little bit of it on Monday. We've got some staff coming in to help do that. So, but that being said, what I'm very thankful for, for all of the food service staff that, that put all the hours in to pack the food. But for our pillar work here, uh, five point four is nutritional needs and preferences. The, uh, twenty four, twenty five school year, we wanted a hundred percent of student nutritional needs to be on paper out there where our, our kitchen staffs could see it. And really, honestly, we're, it's a hundred percent that we had this the first month because it was as simple as creating a live document. And every month at our managers' meeting, we, we pull it up and the act, the managers will actually put students in, like if they're enrolled tomorrow, they'll go in and if my kid's allergic to milk, they'll go in and they'll put it in, and it's, and all the managers can see it, I can see it, Ms. Tavich can see it. And so it's just really good, and it keeps everybody on the same page. We have a lot of students, Mr. Rupert knows a lot of students move from elementary to elementary. They can get on there and they can drag one kid from Mount Vernon over to Broadhead and put that kid in, in that document. So that was a hundred percent, that was a really easy one to do. The second one under, uh, five point four is the preferences in the, in what foods do kids like, what do they want to try? And our goal was to, uh, increase the number of student sample days to three. So we did two the year before, do three this, uh, this year, and we did that. Uh, we did a November, uh, sample day, a February sample day, and an April sample day. So those were, were good. And it's so funny because, and you'll think that I'm lying, but I promise you, there was a kid that went through the line yesterday, said, hey, I know you, you're the one that did the, the mini corn dogs, and he, he remembered that. So it was just, you know, it's, see kids and they, they refer to you as somebody that's giving them food, I guess, they, they remember that. Uh, then the second, uh, uh, point for food service, uh, break, breakfast participation. Our goal was to increase the high school breakfast participation to fifty percent. And just to give you a little back, and I, I, I mention this every time, I know you all know this. Middle school and high school across not just our district or across our state, across the entire nation is really, really low on, uh, participation. The high school was at thirty, what was it, thirty seven percent, it was thirty seven percent before we started some of these things. And we increased, our goal was to get to fifty percent, we made it to forty four percent. So we're still working, we're still on the path. So instead of a big green button there, we have a yellow button, but we did increase to forty four percent. We did several things, uh, we, uh, increased their options. We, uh, we did a try it Tuesday where we had some different stuff on Tuesday. We uh, we did a try it Tuesday where we had some different stuff on Tuesdays. We did a, the rocket roast or the coffee. The kids really, really liked that. And you know, you get it for free when you go through the breakfast line. And we just wanted to just try to give them some things that would bring them in in the mornings. They like to socialize. They like to get there and be with their boyfriend or their girlfriend and, and talk for fifteen minutes before class starts. Uh next year, we hope to go to the middle school and maybe do some type of a smoothie breakfast instead of a coffee. Middle school kids have coffee, right? You know, some, some type of a, a smoothie. And we just did it a couple of days a week at the high school, uh Wednesdays and Fridays. And maybe we'll try to implement something like that at the middle school. And just some things to get our numbers up. Cause I mean, obviously you all know that our numbers are directly related to how much money we get reimbursed. And you know, for, for every breakfast that uh that we give a kid, we get two dollars and eighty-four cents of a, of a reimbursement claim. So every kid that comes through, it adds and it adds what helps pay for our ovens and our staffing and all of the food, things like that. So we need kids to come out. And anytime that you all can promote that and push kids and just tell them, hey, go through and get you some breakfast. And it's really hard. Elementary's are easy. Almost every kid goes through the line. And one thing I could, Mr. Hopkins, if we could get them to the store. I'm, I'm just playing. I'm just like, but that really does help. And honestly, that, that does help the most at the elementary schools because they get there and all the elementary kids are off the bus by seven thirty or seven thirty-five. So those kids have time to go through the lines. And, and they do have time at the middle school and high school too. But it is, if they only have ten or fifteen minutes, they want to socialize and they want to be there with their buddies and, and, and that type of thing. So just any, and if y'all ever had any, any suggestions, anything, just reach out to me and we, we are willing to do whatever we can on our end to, to change a menu, to manipulate something, to make it work, to increase our numbers. And I, I appreciate y'all for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Brayden. That is willing to speak to us about our technology department.
So we've got a couple, but uh the first one's data security. Of course, when you have technology, you always have data security. Nobody likes changing their passwords. Nobody likes to affect their authentication, because I think we all know at this point. We have to do it. So uh we're good with that security. We're, we monitor that. Staff get emails when they have to change their passwords. We have a good system for that. The work for the data security, I'm going to take you to lean in. So, so I'm, I'm working on that. We'll move forward with that. And now we'll talk to the board about that in August. Uh we have to, I have to do an annual cybersecurity health check. So we'll talk about that. That's just a list of the things that we're doing every year and things that we add and of course, that's every check. That's the first one. The second one's instructional devices. Um so we, Jenny mentioned our U S grants. We've placed a block of our U S grant. Still that we'll get that. Green, our flat panels in our elementary, elementary school classrooms. Um so hopefully we'll know soon if we get that. Uh the next thing is our, is how we, how we track tickets. It used to be that I'd just get an email and then I'd go fix problems. Of course, COVID changed all that. And now our team, my team is amazing. Um I can't say enough good things about them. But um we changed the way we, we see those tickets, the, and, and how we categorize those, who fixes those, lots of different categories. So that helps us. Uh instructional programs. Uh this year, uh me and O'Kayla met with each teacher. We talked about the instructional programs they used. Um ones they said they didn't like, we looked at, we looked at data for those, how many students go to those websites, if they're paid, if they're not, the cost, how those, some part of that is how those are funded. Um and then so, and we sort those by grade level. So we have developed a database where teachers, if there's a new teacher, they can go and they can see what programs we recommend. Really other teachers recommend by grade level, by, by subject area. Um and then we know which ones teachers prefer. Um number two on this five point eight. Solving those issues, right? Sometimes resolving structural programs issues are hard because that has to sync when one system from infinite campus to clever to another system. So it takes a little while. So um we set that goal to be forty-eight hours, not twenty-four, because oftentimes things just have to sync up. Uh uh but we, we've met that. So within forty-eight hours, we definitely have a new student enrollment. They're completely happy to be ready. Usually that's much quicker. Sometimes we have a change. Um five point nine is internet safety. So a couple of big changes. Uh last year we started, we added gaggle. Gaggle is for mental health monitoring. So that's a big thing. We, we actually have a contract that helps us get human review, which means if a student is flagged, there's a real life human monitoring, those searches twenty-four seven for mental health related issues. So um those people will reach out to Mr. Ripper, me, Angie Payne, other people, even if it's the middle of the night. Um if they can't get us, they will call down one one four. So that, that, so that's, that's a goal that we had is to make sure that's achieved a hundred percent. And it is, and it's worked straight. And uh we, it, it works. We get calls. Oh, so um uh another one is Go Guardian. So we, we've switched statewide. We've switched from Last Speed to Go Guardian. We've had some issues with our switch to Go Guardian, uh working through those. Um so this year we're going to be, but we, we've maintained for, for filtering, we've switched to Go Guardian. Uh they've got, they don't have a lot of features that Last Speed have. So for next year, we will have a hybrid model. We go already in Last Speed. Uh we will have all, all the things we mentioned, all the things we. And the last one, uh the biggest one right now on my mind is uh, is uh the network reliability, liability performance. I can't say it, but I know about it. The, the first big deal is last week we were funded for our first of three E-Rate projects. Um that gives us equipment uh for our data center that's valued at three, forty-eight thousand dollars. And it gives us, it pays for it at ninety percent. So it's like a grant. It's not exactly a grant. It's like a grant. It's ninety percent. Um that's a big deal. Um we are in final review. I would love to say today that we're for the second project, but we're not. We're in final review. It'll be really soon. That's four hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment roughly for the three hundred seventy-six thousand dollar equipment for fifty-six thousand. Um uh that will be a complete network and network switch replacement in each school, wireless access point replacement, completely new network uh in these two projects uh completely new. So um and then the last one, we have an E-Rate project for um getting fiber to the rock building, uh rerouting, reach, changing around our whole, uh our whole backbone of our fiber network. You guys, I don't, if you don't know, we own our own fiber. People always ask me if we have Windstream Internet or we have Spectrum or whatever we have, but we don't. Um tree added along several years ago, we added our own fiber network. So we own that. So Friday night, Roundstone's network went down. We don't call Spectrum. We call our fiber contractor. They, they call me. So um we, we uh, we, we, it's, it's helpful. It's helpful to have our own network. It saves us a lot of money. Um it's our net. So um today, uh another reason why this is a big deal is today, we pulled fiber into the rock. So rock building has fiber in that building today. So we have internet. It's not our whole backbone redesigned, but we're going to be able to. So um it's taken a long time. It's been frustrating being in, be in that building and not having it. It's been frustrating for me. So um but we're going to have internet tomorrow. So that's good. So and that's, that's my last.
So I'm going to talk to you about community engagement and family partnership. Um so this is a goal that's just really near and dear to my heart is, is to have in our families and our community be a huge part of our system. And we set the goal to increase our involvement from families and community members who are actively participating in our schools by twenty-five percent. And I'm really, I'm so proud. Look at the high school. They increased it by four hundred and fifty-four percent increase. So that was just really phenomenal. And I attribute so much of that to Mr. Jesse and Ms. Angie and the work that they're doing with the Richard Committee and especially being so strategically focused on targeting those high school families. Um so huge increase there. The middle school increased forty-seven percent, Mount Vernon ten percent, Broadhead twenty-six percent and Roundstone eight percent. So every one of our schools had, had a really significant increase. I think that's something that we can all be proud of. So who goes to our schools for that work? A portrait of a rocket goal. We set that this year to implement fully one hundred percent at the twelfth grade level. And that includes the defensive learning with our seniors. Um we did meet that goal at a hundred percent. I know some of you in this room got to participate in that process. But I'm telling you, it was absolutely phenomenal. Um the work that those students did, it, I, I just can't tell you how proud I was. I, I had the opportunity to sit in on multiple um defenses of learning and to listen to the, to the students. And it was really neat. This was the first year, but if you would sit in a room of several, and I know Ms. Marquita was a huge part of that, and, and she did way more of that than I did. But the kids, the things that our kids do that we really have no idea about will blow you away. Like I, I just had no, I mean, you see kids in the hall, you see them at lunch, but the things that they do outside of school, they are truly phenomenal. I mean, they are, they are working. I mean, they are living full-time work lives out of, outside of coming to school all day. And just to hear them talk about it and to, to talk about their resiliency and their ability and skills and everything that they've done. It, it was the highlight of my school year is getting to sit in on those and listen to our kids. And oftentimes someone would present and the next student would say, can I go again? I didn't know that I could talk about that. Like they, they really learned and we're learning from each other and it was great. So next year, our goal is to implement that at the eighth grade level and at the fifth grade level. So we're, we're just going to transition that work down to our, our, our eighth graders and fifth graders. So I'm really excited about what that's going to look like. And then as those kids transition to the high school, it's just going to get easier and easier every year. Of course, our twelfth graders this year, this was our first year. So they were guinea pigs and, but they were, they were really phenomenal. So they're proud of the high school and what they've done. Um so our work-based learning, all of you know that that's been a huge, huge um emphasis that we've placed here in the district along with our post-secondary ready. And we wanted this year to increase the number of paid co-op opportunities that was specifically tied to a career pathway. Our goal was to increase that by twenty percent. Well, we increased it by ninety-five percent. So we really, really just, and again, I think it just goes back to an emphasis on what does that mean and what does that look like and how do we get there? So great, great work there. And then our, also we had a goal to increase the number of internships, whether that be paid or unpaid. And we wanted to um increase that by ten percent. And we increased that one by three hundred percent. So really great work at the high school and the A T C. And I appreciate everything that everybody's done to help us achieve that goal. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Phillips. And I will say, as Mr. Phillips is coming up here, this is Mr. Phillips' last board meeting with us. Um and how much I appreciate you and the work that he's done. And I know that we're going to have to be calling him. We'll try to wait ninety days. But um you know, he really has become our guru and option six and option nine and all of those avenues that it takes for people to get certified. And he's very, very knowledgeable and so, so helpful.
All right. Miller said, and this is, I take my glasses off to read this. It's a, it's about getting old. I got a bit long to see you all out there. But I think I think I'm off to read. Uh professional learning and, you know, our quality of staff. One thing that I do, I do get out and I recruit. I'm not afraid to call somebody that I know is working in another district and say, hey, you want to come work for us? And we've done that on many occasions. So uh but we're very blessed here. There are so many districts out there that are not fully staffed. You know, but we are getting high-quality candidates every year for our positions. And that's because that goes back to, which I'll mention in a minute. But you know, being one of the best places to work. I've worked with a lot of school districts and over my career. And just the things that I hear. Now, don't get me wrong, we're not perfect by no means. None of us are. But overall, I mean, I cannot think of a better place to be than Rock Castle County. Uh but you know, we're able to also retain these people, not only get them here, but then they realize, hey, I should have been here all along, or I wish I came sooner. And so we're also able to retain these people as well. So all right, professional development. Uh that's one thing Dr. Mallinger has really uh increased since she has taken over. And you know, it starts at the beginning of the year when we do our district day. And you know, the whole district has opportunities to pick things that they're interested in. And then she's also opened up a world through Southeast, South Central, K E D C. And you can look there, you've got Kagan, U Fly. I mean, you can go on and on about the opportunities that our district has. And if someone is in need of something that they know of individually, because there's nobody knows any better than me, what I need, then we'll make it happen. And that's one thing I'm very proud about our district. They will make it happen. If you want to improve, all you gotta do is ask. And our district will make it happen. And so uh that's one of those things that our district is great on. Uh sometimes I think about all the programs and I'm not even in most of them. And I think about, oh, I'd almost be overwhelmed as a classroom teacher to a certain extent. But I've not heard anybody complain about any of the at any of these programs. U Fly, Kagan Training, uh all of those K C M, you go on and on. They just talk about how good it is. And I think about that group that's just coming back from K E D C last week. I mean, school was just out, yet they went right back to professional development. And they just keep raving about it. And I mean, don't they? So it's just one of those things, you know? And so it's a whole new world that they can take advantage of. Uh and they do. I appreciate that. Then the last one there, uh teacher coaching and mentorship. You know, we have Ms. Trinity, we have Ms. Marquita at middle school and high school. And I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Marquita. She helped me with the new teacher cadre this year. Uh teachers are all enrolled in some kind of new teacher program, whether it's through Southeast, South Central or coming to our own specifically for our district. And so, you know, they all participate in some kind of professional development. Uh I would like to, I always like to see professional development, especially our own district, increase even more because it's specific to our district. And so in that case, you know, we always want to improve. But you know, things can can't get much better in our district. And I think about culture and, and that's what this is talking about too, quality staff. You know, it's I did a survey back in the winter and it matched exactly what this survey said for the best places to work. The information I got matched what they got. And so mine was sent to everybody. This was sent to just random people. But the information matched. So you know, I've had a, I want to thank you all first of all for a great career. Uh it's, this has been the hardest part I've had so far, to be honest with you. Uh been an honor to serve in the different roles that I've got to serve. So I do want to thank you all. And I agree, this is one of the best places to work. And I couldn't, I've had opportunities to work other places every consider. So I do want to thank you all. And if I could ever be of assistance to anyone, just like.
As you can see, it's been a really great year. Been a lot of work, a lot of different areas by a whole, whole lot of different people. And the rocket learners to rocket leaders, our vision statement, it doesn't just apply to our kids. It applies to our adults as well. And you know, I think that that's what makes our district great is because people want to learn. You know, we all want to learn and, and everybody is trying to work hard every day just to get better and better and better. And that's for the benefit of our, our students. And that Mr. Robert had to step out early um this evening. But you mentioned earlier that there was another superintendent that came today and he sat with me for several hours. We went through all of this because he's trying to implement what uh we're doing in, in our, in this school district. But the important thing that I want to say about that is, that's great. But he drove three and a half hours. Because he said, you know, all I go in meetings, I'm here in Rock Castle County. I'm going here, I'm here in Rock Castle County. I don't want to do his own call. I don't want to do a phone call. I need somebody. I need you to sit down and just show me. Like what, how would you start this? What, what is happening? What does this look like? And when he left today, he's like, you know, I can do this. I really think, you know, we can do this in our district. He's like, I just needed, I needed that first step. I needed to understand what it was about. Um so I think that's the biggest compliment that anybody can get in each school district can give is when other people want to try to start evaluating the work that you're doing. And they want to, to look at the work that you're doing. And, and I, I put every single bit of credit right here in the people in this room. You all are fabulous leaders. Come to work every single day for the right reason. But everybody puts their egos aside and we just put our heads down and work. And that's what makes this place great. And I appreciate you all. I appreciate what you do. Honored to serve as your superintendent. Honored to serve as your superintendent. And I think the board members are supporting us, supporting all of us, you know. And, and part of what Mr. Phillips said is, you know, if, if somebody wants to learn or somebody wants something, just ask. Well, that's the truth. That's the way our board operates as well. And that's why we're able to do the things that we're able to do because they're so supportive of, of our visions and our dreams and the things that we want to implement. And, and you help us break down barriers and you help us find ways to make things happen good for kids. So I think all of our summer feeding work came from Ms. Angie. Because Ms. Angie said, you know, we're talking about the variable calendar. And she said, you know, well, I, I really don't love this. And the reason I don't love it is because kids are hungry during the summertime. And, and from the, the encouragement from Ms. Angie, you know, now we're implementing our summer feeding. And Mr. Chris never, you know, never missed a beat. It's like, okay, we'll make it happen and we're making it happen. So appreciate all the hard work that everybody in our, our district did. Just really proud of all of this. And it's a great place to work, the best place to work.
We have the trophy that shows we have. Hold on to that for a dear life.
Yes. I, I just wanted to say, wow, what a wonderful presentation that Dr. Malinger. And, you know, I could go through and call every one of you out by name. And there's not adequate words to say to justify what needs to be said. I will say though, I'm going to call out Benny. Is he still back there? And I'm going to call out Robbie. And I'm going to call out Miss Debbie. And I am very happy for you. I'm saddened that I will say, once a rocket, always a problem. Wish you all very, very, very best.
The next thing on our agenda tonight is the RCMS construction update.
I've got just pretty much built through some folders just so you can see it. I'm gonna go right along with Trent. And it's been a great working environment for us. And I think we have open communication on just about everything. And I think everything's going well. Neighbors might want to think so, but okay, everywhere else. So we're, this is pretty much going to be a flyer for photos. This was taken just yesterday, I believe. And so this is the football field. It is pretty much on track to be ready. All those little, all those little black things you see are just the drainage things going on. And so all of that. So your bleachers, you can see are done, the concession stand is going to get its roof next week. And everything inside is pretty much getting to be done. So you can see that that's what that part is. These are just more photos. So this is the actual school. So you see a lot more out of the ground this month than in the past. That blue section is your first section of poured floor. And actually, it was poured yesterday, so two days ago. So it's actually all poured now. I think the final photo will show that on there. If you kind of want a little orientation, that's the library. And where the machinery is inside the building is your kitchen. And that's where they're really heavily working right now. And then all that thing coming out on the right is the classrooms going out to your two-story building. So right at the end of that last kind of thing that comes out is where that pustule will be underneath the school. Just going around a corner, doing a lot of work. We're going back to the road, starting to work on that and get that down to where it is. As you can see, there it is. It's a little bit high going around the corner. So you will be hearing some more beating and banging, although the only one that probably heard is the principal. But that's going to start on Monday. We've got to clear the guys and everything's going through that. This is just the concession stand. It's, I think that's the actually inside of where you would do concessions in there. This is the bathrooms. There's your stands. Bleachers are all poured and ready to go. They've been measured for seating. So that all should be coming as well. Just a close-up of that, a couple of close-ups. Your light bulbs are up and they're all got conduit run to them. So that's coming right along too. All right. Inside the school, we're just demoing up on the mezzanines. Because we've got to make the mechanicals, mechanical room for this side because that is what powers the whole new side of the building. And I'll start with the walls on Monday. And then this is just another picture from the front side. I'm the one that's there every day. Anybody has a question, you can come by. It'd be better than the neighbor coming in and talking. It's a monster drainage and they're saying lap of water. I'm like, so does everybody. So. Anyway, it's been great. And I think that's, he's right. I have an education. My mother, my wife teaches. And my dad was exactly what Trent did. And maintenance for a school system committee. So been an education of my life and I've done a few schools. So a little bored of having another football field. So that's going to be fun. But it's on, I'm, I think everything's on schedule. And actually, some things I think are ahead. We're doing it a little backwards than we thought. We thought we were going to do the two-story building first. But I think actually getting the kitchen out of the way is probably the best thing first. So.
Operations and actions. Are there any questions for Dr. Malinger? Have a motion second, all in favor?
General fund had revenues of $1,683,812.65. We had expenses of $1,760,524.63. We're well on the way to wrap up this school year. Last month, we talked a little bit about budget and, you know, things are on track to finish out the school year and, and all of our budgets.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
The next item is, we have to go into the closing session to discuss our superintendent evaluation at this time. So I need a motion to go into closing session. Close and second, all in favor? We will.
...
Motion for us to come out of closed session back into open.
Second.
Okay. Thank you guys for waiting. It takes us very long. We get back there and start talking about other things. No, not really. So the purpose of going into closed session is we discussed Dr. Ballinger's superintendent evaluation. And you know, we shared this with you back there and for as far as public, to let the public know as far as the standing of the board itself in all areas. If there was a rating above exemplary, you would have that. We did not find any area that you not just excelled at accomplishing in an exemplary fashion. There's not adequate words. And I know with that being said, we already know what you're going to say. So I'm going to go ahead and say that for you. It's all due to the team that you have here right now. And I agree. I agree. And you're very blessed, but you've also, you need to pat yourself on the back. Okay, so we do appreciate what you do. We are very blessed to have you as our fearless leader for Rock Castle County Schools. And I will say this, the thing that I love most about your leadership is your heart. We can tell that you love the children of Rock Castle County. You love their families and that is why you are so special. So thank you so much. With that being said, that it will be evaluated as exemplary in all areas. Let the minutes note that for the superintendent evaluation, I need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Item five C is review and approve the contract amendment and extend the current contract of the superintendent for an additional year. We also discussed that in closed session and it is agreement of the board that we will extend that current contract to add that year and make the contract amendment. I think that's all that we need to do with that except a motion and a.
Make the motion.
All in favor? Once again, thank you, Dr. Ballinger. Item five D, review and approve the KSVA policy and procedure updates. This is the first reading.
The, this is our routine updates from KSVA. However, Angie and I did talk on the phone tonight. There are a lot of updates this year. Just to remind you, these are updated based on any changes in the law during the previous legislative session. So our team is reviewing all of those for implementation for the school year. This does will take two readings.
Need a motion to approve the first reading?
All in favor? Item five E, review and approve the job description for special education assistants.
We have that in front of you and we did have some discussions surrounding this at our last board meeting. As you know, we have had multiple special ed directors that have worked for Rock Castle County Schools during the last five years as well. As the superintendent, and that is a very, very difficult job and Mr. Benny can attest to that. And we're asking that individual to take on a huge role and number of responsibilities. And I'm asking to for the board to approve someone to assist in that in that role. This individual would be would be answering to the director of special ed, but would be assisting in preschool with our 504s, doing chairing of meetings for preschool and speech, working with CAP and also working with our hospital unit serving our special education students at the hospital. So I think this is a much needed position and to bring some more stability to the special education department and provide some relief to that to that director of special.
See, you want to have any questions?
Need a motion to approve.
All in favor? Review and approve the fiscal year 2026 salary schedule.
Back to that.
Take that.
Yeah, go read our ground.
We have, you'll see the salary schedule has noted the new position. And on the, each of the changes are highlighted. We're adding football coach for sixth grade stipend. And wanted to point out on our classified salary schedule, we added the 25 plus year rank. And we have a massive spreadsheet that does all of the calculations. And as we went back and reviewed, we had two spots in all of those calculations that when we added the 25 plus, it added the 2%, but it did not add the step in two areas. And we highlighted that for you. So we just needed to make that correction.
And I did want to go back to the sixth grade position. We do not currently have a sixth grade football team. That have a football team, but it's under, it's running that. In the league or the region that we're in, the other teams that we play are part of a school system. So those other school systems, it's becoming difficult for them to play us because our sixth grade is part of a county system. And other school systems are not wanting to play us. So where they've requested that we add sixth grade to be part of our sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And I prefer it that way. That way we're in control of that and that's our, that's our team. And when, when they have Rock Castle Rockets on and they're going to another county to play, we know that those are our coaches and we're in charge of that. So.
Someone have any questions?
Make the motion.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor? Item five G, review and approve the 2526, is it, how do you say it?
Howchens.
Howchens? Insurance package proposal.
So our package includes several different proposals and I want to go over a few of the areas with you. In the first proposal, it's kind of our larger package that covers our general insurance. And the proposal is a total of $405,902. This is a renewal increase of $71,680. Just with current year and prior year, we've had an increase a total of $264,660. So just two years ago, we're paying more for one year. In one year, just the increases than we paid for our whole policy two years ago. So significant increases, about 17% insurance rate increase. Our, we did, Mr. Trent Clark, I don't think that he is still with us, but he and I did have a, a second property quote. We had a conference call with the Chubb Insurance. They provided a quote of to purchase our general property of $20166. This is 10,570 above what Liberty has quoted us for our general insurance. There's been a lot of changes and a lot of, you know, in the insurance conversation that we, Dr. Ballinger and I've had. You know, lots of major events, not only across Kentucky, but across the United States. And insurance, you probably, your interest probably increased. My insurance has increased personally. But this is, you know, a significant increase. We've looked at other options, but at this time, other than the Chubb general property insurance quote and the Howchens insurance group, this is, this is what we have to present. Um, there's a breakdown in comparison of each of our line items in our general property. It kind of breaks it down by area and shows you the increases. But this does include general liability, school leaders care in emissions, our auto premium insurance for all of our buses and a total umbrella that gives us some, the umbrella gives us some additional coverage. So the presentation is $405,902.
That's crazy. I'm just, I'm just like sitting here just.
Get our increase in seat, you know. Want to do so much more with it. We want to, we want to change instructional program. We want to do, but these expenses just so.
Okay, I know that you've done this, but I have to ask. Now, we are, we don't have any like crazy coverage, do we?
No.
I mean, you know what I'm saying? Because at one time I checked a policy of mine and I have like, I don't know, avalanche coverage or something. I live on top of a mountain, you know, so.
So you live right ahead of you.
I mean, you know, sometimes there's like little hidden clauses, 10,000 here or whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely. The coverage is comparable to what we have in the current year, you know, so no significant changes in coverage. There are many, many additional coverages that we can take and those are found on page three. The past couple of days, I've spent some additional time with our insurance carrier asking questions about the specific additional coverages. And, you know, at any point, if we find that we have, we want to look at this list and there's something that we want to explore, we could add additional coverage. However, in looking at this list and comparing our current coverage, our coverage meets our needs at this time.
Would you care to explain? Matt asked me previous question about buses in that five year term.
Yes.
Was correct when I shared.
Sure. So just two years ago, you know, we recently had a bus accident. Had we had that accident last year's policy or this year's current policy, the prior policy, that bus would have been replaced at 100% replacement cost. That is a change and buses are only replacement costs for five years. And that's a very significant change to our policy. I've had two different conversations with our insurance carrier, asking if an additional coverage option is available to us. And it is a blanket wide policy requirement. So they've changed all policies for that criteria. At this time, there's not another option. And, and that's quite unfortunate because, you know, just that one change cost our district over $100,000 in not having replacement costs for our bus. Yeah, on a, you know, really, really, Mr. Hopkins, it was good bus. You know, if we had had replacement costs, that would have saved us over $100,000 just this year. There are a couple of specific line items that we would, that are part of the umbrella. One of those, we talked a little bit about it last year, is the terrorism premium. It's an additional $3,222 annually. That premium would require a national declaration in, in order for us to have a benefit from it. And last year we chose to decline that. And so that's something that, that we do want to consider. We also talked last year about the wind hill buy down deductible that is available to us. It's available at a cost of $37,800. The buy down would reduce our deductible for wind hail damage on one of our buildings from $100,000 deductible to $25,000 deductible. Our recommendation to you last year was that in lieu of taking the buy down, that we would establish a fund. And based on last year's difference, we, we designated that we would budget $12,000 annually in our own fund that we would have available for any deductible, not just the specific type of deductible. And if that's something that you want to consider, we would continue to create our own fund and our own cash deductible. As I mentioned, there are a number of possible non-insured coverages and at any time, we don't have to make a decision on any of those. At this time, we ever want to look at them, you know, individually. I did go through the list with our insurance carrier and at this time, our recommendation would be to, to not, to decline those additional coverages.
I don't think we can afford them.
I understand.
You said, did it how much annually into that?
12,000. And we can increase that if.
I think we would need to increase that. Because that, so it was 37,000 a year.
The cost for the buy down would be 37,800.
And our deductible would have been what?
It would decrease it from 100,000 to 25,000. So. So last year we would have $12,000. If current year set aside, current year $12,000. If we added an additional $12,000, we would be at 24 for next fiscal year.
And that's just for Hill.
We would be creating our own.
I know, but that, that buy down was just for.
That was just for Hill. We have so much Hill.
I don't think creating our own fund is a great idea. I mean, I think that's a great idea, but I think in our.
Want Miss Jenny, maybe in that next four, maybe you can come back with some.
A different.
Would there be an ultimate goal, Jenny? What you would want. I mean, it's, yeah.
Um, so that would, and that's really looking at lots of wind and hail damage, you know. My goal would be that, let's, let's use an example. An example would be, let's take our academy group. The deductible on that group was $50,000. You know, my goal would be in the next couple of years that we reach a fund, a security fund of $50,000 that we would have in our budget that if we know that we have, you know, an issue that we have $50,000 and that we would continue to increase that annually.
Well, think on that. We can come back to, there's a number that you would like to break.
But this is the thing, we maintain a particular contingency, no matter what. So if we're not spending over, then we have that money, whether it's set aside or not, it's still set aside in a contingency.
Do you have four of that, four dollars?
We always have that.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the insurance package proposal that Miss Jenny has so graciously presented to us. Got a motion?
Yes.
Angie Woods?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Good.
Miss Jenny, you're on the top end block again with the 2526 health insurance workers compensation.
Yes, ma'am. Insurance, we, we have been very fortunate, very diligent. Our schools, for the safety of our employees is the highest priority of our, our district. In each of our departments, each of our directors work very closely with our HEMI insurance. Each year annually, we do walkthroughs with them. We have them come in, visit our schools and, you know, identify any risk areas. So we're really focusing on risk management. And as a result of that, we have a very low incident rate of incidents amongst our schools. The renewal cost is $37,832.51. This is a cost savings from the prior year, $7,986.04. This is, the workers comp covers an injury of any or.
This is something that we actually have also.
Make the motion.
Got a motion? In a second, all in favor? All right. Next, review and approve the 2526 Howchens insurance cyber.
We have our insurance proposal to cover cyber liability. We hope we never have to deal with that. Mr. Brandon works, he mentioned some checks that he does and some tests that he does within our systems to ensure that we are taking the necessary safeguards in the area of cyber risk. We have a liability insurance coverage proposal. It is from CFC. It is $13,927.92. This is a cost savings of $334.30 over the prior year. It is a $2 million policy with a $10,000 deductible.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve? All in favor? Next, we have a review and approve the crisis procedure guide for the 2526. Mr. Rafferty's not here. This is a routine thing that we do every year.
No change.
No change.
Need to make sure that I've said that there's, there's no change to this crisis procedure guide. And the next approval, there's no change to the district code of acceptable behavior and discipline.
You need to make sure that Mr. Rafferty is aware that, you know, his presence is necessary. Person. Now reviewing approve the district code of acceptable behavior. All right. All in favor? Review and approve the federal cash request statement of assurance.
It is just the assurance that you give me the authority to request federal funds on behalf of the district. And it also lists two backup representatives that could request funds in my absence.
Got a first and second, all in favor? Next is our discussion review, our superintendent personnel action report. You have that to look at. See, you want to have questions for Dr. South? Thank you. Next, we have department reports. I think we've covered that area tonight. Thomas?
You can, you can go again.
Next, we have our superintendent communication.
Well, Miss Angie, I know you said you were going to speak for me, but I can't. I know it. I just want to say how much I appreciate this board, this all this superintendent for our special district. They might have said it back best when we were in the closed session and he travels the state and hears about lots of issues and things going on in other school districts and we're just so incredible. At the people that work for us and that support. It shows in, in the services we're able to provide to our families. That's what we're all for. I, I would be remiss if I didn't just say that we get a year end review, but none of that year end review would be possible without your support. Thank you all for what you do and to the central office staff, to the principals and everybody. It's just thankful to wake up every day and come to work and really appreciate everybody and what they do. Just how hard everybody works for, for benefited kids. It's just really, really impressive. And I'm thankful and grateful and blessed and, and all of those things. You said you speak for me, but I got to just say thank you to everybody. It's, I'm, it's really, you just don't find people every day that are willing to run the funds or stuff. Know, you know, you know, when you've landed in one spot, not when.
Next, we have board comments.
Well, I, I know lots of folks are gone, but my daughter graduated two, two weeks ago tonight. It's hard to, I don't know. It feels like a year, but. I just, it struck me that day how blessed we have been, teachers and principals and staff from kindergarten. She started with Angie and I, kindergarten, all the way through high school, just such wonderful people. Such coffee, wonderful teacher, really good teachers, always are. And Miss Grace is gone, but just.